And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Good evening. I'd just like to announce that Kathryn Sifareta-Brayton is at another hearing in Buffalo and is excused from the meeting this evening. I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. Laura Kathryn Mullen-Briggs, a retired librarian for the North Syracuse Central School District; Irene M. Anis, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District; and Susan A. Moore, a 1972 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Our first item, presentation-wise, is a proclamation. And the proclamation states that the North Syracuse Central School District food service staff has contributed to the health and education development of our district's children by making nutritious breakfasts and lunches that help students improve grades, increase attention, reduce absence and tardy rates, and improve behavior. The food service staff continues to make positive changes in order to provide nutritional meals that meet the dietary guidelines for Americans and are a dedicated group of professionals. To honor the food service staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments on behalf of the children who attend our schools, I, Pat V. Garbone, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the Board of Education, express our deepest gratitude and proclaim the week of October 1st through October 5th, 2012, as Food Service Appreciation Week, to be celebrated with appropriate activities. Now, when this statement says that they continue to make positive changes and make nutritious breakfasts and lunches, that's an understatement because of the regulations, not only by the federal government but by the state of New York, relative to the nutrition factors of foods. And it's also, basically, a restaurant, per se, because the kids choose what it is that they want, and the cafeteria managers and cook managers and the administrators in the food service department have to make sure that the meals that they provide not only are nutritious and meet all these guidelines, but also are the types of meals that the kids want to buy. And I have to say that up until recent years, because of budgetary woes that we've had, and through no fault or effort on their part, the food service department was usually the only department that we ran that was usually in the black. And it was because of their hard work and their effort. Not only that, through the course of our projects dating back to the junior high school, the food service department was able to fund the purchase of equipment for the cafeterias in many of the schools through our renovation projects because we didn't have the money or couldn't budget them, but the food service department came to our rescue and provided ovens and coolers and different things like that. So, to say that they just provide nutritional breakfasts and lunches would be an understatement because, I don't know, how many meals? I think it's billions of meals a year that they serve. So, with that, the recommended action is to declare the week of October 1st through October 5th Food Service Appreciation Week. Motion, Bob. Second, George. All in favor? That's unanimous. And let you guys come up.
Jerry?
You would if there were a few other...
Good evening. We're excited to talk with you about Lens this evening. And with me I have Dr. William Silke, who is the Director of the Educational Leadership Program at Lemoine College. We're going to give you a brief overview of the program and its implementation. Lens stands for Leadership Enrichment in North Syracuse, and as you can see from the logos, it's a joint effort between our school district and Lemoine College. First, we'd like to talk a little bit about how Lens came to be and why. What was the purpose behind it? The statewide initiatives have led to a desire and a need to increase teacher leadership capacity, not only in our district but across the state. And in addition to that, we have experienced from time to time a need to fill administrative positions. So, last year, at this time, the whole idea of Lens was nothing more than a conversation between Dr. Dice, when she first arrived here, a little more than a year ago, and myself, about a concept called Grow Your Own. The need was not only to enhance teacher leadership, but at that time, some of you may recall, we were having a difficulty, a difficult time, filling several administrative positions, in some cases going back out two and three times to interview teams. We talked about growing our own leaders. We already informally acknowledged teacher leaders within our district, and they play several roles, but we saw this as an opportunity to allow them to see the organization from a bigger picture and broaden the teacher perspective, looking to enhance talent within our culture and the opportunity in the future to hire the best. So, this program, we're hoping, is going to address leadership at multi-levels, teacher, administrative, and even at the central office. So, how did that conversation turn into what we have today in one short year? We started by establishing a planning committee, and several of the people on the planning committee are here tonight. Some were unable to make it due to other commitments, but I think it's important to know who the planning committee involved. And so, if you're here tonight in the audience, please stand. Alicia Pizzuto, Dave Cordone, Dan Bowles, John Corulla, Randy Downs, Christine Wink, Dr. Silke, Dr. Suzanne Gilmore, also from Lemoine College, myself, and last but not least, Dr. Dice was there in the planning meetings as well. So, what did we do after we established a committee? And I think it's important to know that two of the names that I mentioned on the committee are the union presidents from both the teacher group and the administrative group. We felt that this was important for them to develop this along with us. At that point, we connected with a higher education partner, hence, Dr. Silke from Lemoine. Why did we choose Lemoine? For several reasons. They participate in, they have participated in a similar project with Syracuse City. Also, many of us have had a working relationship with Dr. Silke and Dr. Gilmore, who are now at Lemoine, and some of us knew them quite well and were trained by them when they were at SUNY Oswego. And we also knew that Lemoine has a quality program for teacher preparation. The next thing we did was look at existing models. We talked with Dr. Dice and reviewed some information about the Rochester City model with St. John Fisher. We explored what Syracuse has done in the past and currently with Lemoine. And we also studied the SUNY Oswego Superintendent Development Program because we built our model for Lens by looking at that model and kind of duplicating what we thought was effective. Then we established a timeline, and as I mentioned, this was nothing more than a concept about a year ago. We got off to a late start last fall, and the committee met, we talked further at District Steering Committee in early spring, and then we were very busy May, June, July, and August. We put together an application process, had people apply, and Dr. Silke's going to talk more about that. And we did meet our goal to have this program up and running for fall. This step view sort of illustrates the three levels and the two jumps that the Lens program is involved with. Taking teacher leadership and developing teacher leaders, some of whom may choose to pursue a certificate of advanced study and perhaps become an assistant principal or a principal in the future. And we will also be working on the next level of the program, which will be to take existing building administrators and give them the opportunity to enhance their skills with the possibility of becoming principals of their own building or central office administrators in the future. I'm going to turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Annette. First of all, let me say on behalf of Lemoine College and myself personally, we're delighted to be involved in this important initiative with North Syracuse Schools. As you can see from the graphic on this slide, there's three overarching concepts that have dictated, to some degree, the content of the program: instruction, communication, and leadership. As a matter of fact, we had a, one of our monthly seminars this afternoon, and we really began exploring with the folks that are involved, the whole concept of leadership, particularly with a focus on teacher leadership. But I will say that there are many other pieces of content that will be built into the program as we go throughout the year. I might also add that these three overarching concepts are tied to courses at Lemoine, which the individuals that have been involved as participants will be given nine graduate credits for three courses at Lemoine as they, after they successfully complete the program this year. That's to offer them the opportunity, if they choose at some point in their career to go on and enter a formal administrative program, these courses would count towards that particular degree. Of course, that's not the purpose of this program, to prepare these people to go into administration at this point, but rather to assume greater roles as teacher leaders. And I might also add that at Lemoine, we have agreed to reduce the tuition from our traditional graduate tuition rate to, for these participants. A number of activities have already started occurring with the participants that I'll review in a few minutes, but the major activities include monthly seminars where everyone gets together and we explore a variety of different concepts and do a great deal of sharing with one another, as well as regular weekly mentor meetings. Each participant is on a team, and each team has a mentor and administrator in the district that's attached to the team. And there are weekly meetings that are being held with each of the teams. We began the program by asking the participants to do some self-assessment, to explore themselves as leaders, and also to develop their belief statements or educational platform statements, in hopes that we would have some baseline data that they could then compare themselves to when they finished the program at the end of the year, to see what kind of change has occurred in them as teacher leaders over time. In addition, there's multiple presentations that we'll be having during the course of the year at our seminars and at some of the team's meeting sessions, as well as issue analysis. And essentially, issue analysis is having each one of these teams work on some aspect of the district's new strategic plan, under the direction of a central office administrator, to help the district explore that particular task within the overarching strategic plan. The goal really is to make the learning authentic and of value to the district as well as to the participants. One of the underlying assumptions of the program, of course, is that not anyone, not everyone, can be involved in the program. And so, when the planning committee met that Annette referenced, we decided that we needed to have a selection process, and people could apply, and they would be evaluated as to whether or not it was felt they were appropriate for the program. And the application process included several things. First of all, an application which asked them to speak to why they wanted to be involved in the program, as well as a reference from a peer, a colleague, and the administrator, that's their immediate supervisor, using a rubric that the committee developed in terms of containing attributes, rather, of what the committee feels effective teacher leaders know, do, and are like. And so, the application package came in, it was reviewed by the full planning committee, and decisions were made about who would be involved in the program and who wouldn't. And I will add, for the most part, we feel the hope for right kind of people applied for the program. I think we had 13 applications and 12 people were admitted into the program. So, we felt really good about that in terms of us getting the word out as to the type of people that ought to be thinking about this for their career development. We also selected mentors, and the mentors had to be certified practicing administrators in North Syracuse Schools because the mentors will technically be adjunct professors at Lemoine College, and we needed people that had the appropriate certification to teach these technically educational administration courses. So, we were very fortunate to have three of your very good administrators step forward to serve in this capacity. Knowing all three of them, having had them as graduate students myself, I felt very confident they could do a nice job for us. So, we're delighted to have them on board as well. And I might also add that they are paid, just as adjuncts are always from Lemoine College, for their work this year. As you can see, this is a list of the participants, and they're arranged by team with the mentor's name on top. And I'm not going to read them all, but if they wouldn't mind standing, perhaps, we can congratulate them for stepping forward and taking on this leadership task. So, as I said, we're delighted to be part of this process. We're looking forward to a very exciting year. We got off to a great start in August. As I said, we just had our second seminar today, and so far, so good. So, thank you.
And one last slide. So, what is our outlook and where do we go from here? The committee is going to be reconvening in the near future. Even though we're excited to see last year's work come to fruition with a group in front of us, we do have some work to do for planning year two for the individuals who are currently in the program. We are determining what that may look like. We have applied for a grant, and we've got some great ideas for opportunities in terms of how to use these individuals should the grant come through. And if the grant doesn't come through, we also have some ideas to explore. We also need, this year, to begin planning year one for building leaders who will be in that second jump that I showed in the little step diagram. So, we're just getting underway with that. Because of the size of our district and the need to have a cohort that's large enough to put coursework together through Lemoine, we are working with Dr. Silke in terms of identifying some other regional partners who may join with North Syracuse and work with Lemoine in this second phase. So, we're excited about pursuing the next steps, and hopefully, next year, we can be back reporting on what we're doing in the next step. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. This is...
Can I add? It's just been an amazing experience, and we've had the opportunity at Cabinet to have two of the teams come and present proposals for consideration in terms of the projects that they're going to be working on. And we know that we have some amazing teachers in our district, but to sit and hear the proposals, you would have been blown away. So, we're scheduled for our third one, but they have all, just with each group, they've just made the bar just a little bit higher for the next group. And everything that they have brought to the table is so pertinent to the work that we've been talking about in the strategic plan. So, I see all the smiles in the back, and I want you to know how appreciative I am, but also the team is, because you rock in my world. So, thank you. You know, we're just excited that you participated, chose to apply. And to Mr. Silke or Bill, thank you for being our partner. You know, from the beginning, we talked about who we could partner with, and Lemoine was, you know, automatically the first choice. So, we're looking forward to a lot more partnerships in the future, and we can't wait for part two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you very much. Budget season number two, Mr. Keegan.
Evening. Tonight, I wanted to give a very brief presentation, kind of to kick off the budget season. As you know, later tonight, the Board will be accepting the budget calendar for the 13-14 budget. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to talk a little bit about where we see 12-13 heading. Again, very early, these are estimates based on three months' worth of activity, and then frame out the 13-14 budget in terms of a few challenges that we see on the horizon already, ones that we need to be aware of and will get through, but we have to work through. So, the first thing I wanted to share with you is just a few things. You know, I kind of look at the budget, the budget's like a playbook in football. You know, once the ball snapped, you know, the plans change based on what happens. And so, we started the 12-13 school year, the year we're in right now, with a particular budget, particularly relative to our instructional staff and the Board and Cabinet. We all looked at our enrollment numbers and felt that we needed to make some adjustments. And so, we've spent a little bit more money on our teaching and instructional staff than we expected, and so, that's something we have to think about. On the energy side, we're very fortunate. We just completed a three-year bid working with BOSI's on our gas and electric costs, and we're going to save this year alone about $500,000. Almost completely offsets the cost of our new instructional staff, which is very fortunate. On healthcare costs, we had budgeted our healthcare to go up 8% this year. And just to remind everybody, our healthcare here in North Syracuse is a self-insured plan, so we really don't know what our healthcare costs are going to be for the 12-13 year. But we recently got, in the last couple of weeks, some projections from PalmCo, our healthcare administrator, that healthcare looks like it might go up about 10.9% versus the 8% we budgeted. If that happens, we could be looking at spending almost $450,000 more than we expected. So, that was quite a surprise to us, but that money hasn't been spent. It doesn't necessarily have to play out that way, but it's something that I felt was important to share with the Board at this time. One of the advantages of some of the hiring we did this summer is that we had expected and planned on having some people on unemployment that won't be on unemployment because we've brought them back to work. And so, we're going to save about $100,000 on unemployment. So, right now, at the end of the first quarter, as of October 1st, 2012, we are about $370,000 in the hole on this year's budget. Now, we have almost $140 million budget, so it's not time to panic. But we're going to be looking at, working with the accounting team here, working with the Cabinet, to look at our expenses as we manage the rest of the year, and we're going to need to be very careful to make sure we can bring the budget in on budget for the year. So, before I progress and talk about 13-14, are there questions about our spending year to date? No? Okay. So, let's talk about 13-14. And so, I think I've said this to the group before, that if you think about our revenues, we really have two big sources. It's the property tax levy that our local taxpayers pay, and it's state aid. So, let's take a look at those two first, starting with state aid. We're estimating, based on some information we've received from Albany, that our general aid will increase by about 3%. Well, that's $1.4 million of revenue increase for us. I want to remind you, the next bullet point there on building aid, that last year when we were doing our budget, we talked about getting two years' worth of building aid on Smith Road. We basically got two payments last year. Well, we're only going to get one payment this year, which is appropriate, and so, we're going to see a drop in our building aid by about $965,000. And our building aid further is going to increase. The state is doing something interesting that kind of makes sense to me, although it's not good news. Many of us have been refinancing our debt in this very low-interest-rate environment. However, our state aid on all of our building projects we've done over the years has an implicit interest rate associated with it. So, since the state knows that people are refinancing their debt, they're going to lower the building aid to take into consideration the lower-interest-rate environment. The $250,000 I have up there right now is a swag. We haven't been able to do the detailed math on it because we don't have all the information on the program, but I wanted to just plant that seed, that we're going to see a reduction in our building aid due to SED, looking, re-examining interest rates on the projects we've done over the last 10 years. So, those factors, again, if it all plays out the way we're laying it out, our state aid will only go up about $185,000 bucks. Our real property taxes, I've done a very preliminary tax cap calculation, and we don't have some of the big adjustments we had last year. So, I'm estimating our tax cap would commit at about 2%, which is a $1.5 million increase. And unfortunately, the sales taxes will go down about $200,000 due to the continued implementation of the sharing agreement with the county. So, net-net-net, I'm very preliminarily estimating our revenues for the 13-14 year will go up $1,485,000. On the other side, looking at our expenses, as you know, our teachers, led by our teachers and a number of bargaining units, have followed suit. We've got, people took a 0% increase for the year we're in, a 1% increase for next year. And so, figuring the 1% increase, that's about a $680,000 increase in our costs next year. We'll benefit again from our utilities bid, that's gas and electric, will be $400,000 lower than it was in the 12-13-year budget. And our BOSI services, because that's got a labor component to it, as you know, much of what we do with BOSI's shared services has labor associated with it, we're expecting an increase in BOSI's of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Fuel prices have been going up. It's something that, although despite our budgeting for an increase, we expect that fuel, primarily gasoline and diesel, will be another $100,000. The big increase right now is that we're anticipating for the 12-13-year, that health benefits could go up as much as 10%. TRS and ERS could go up the 12% to 13% range. We don't have our final numbers on TRS yet, but that's about a $4 million increase in employee benefits, and the total would mean an expenditure increase of $4,580,000. So, that's a pretty daunting delta between expenses and revenues. Normally, we'd rely on our fund balance, and as you, and this slide talks a little bit about fund balance. As you know, we subsidized our budget this year, the 12-13 year, by using $750,000 worth of fund balance. We started the year, this is the, we started the 11-12 year with a $5.6 million fund balance. In the 11-12 year, we used 1.6 million in appropriated fund balance, and so, we had an unreserved fund balance of $3.8 million. And then, we've had, you know, we had a favorable variance, we had some uncollectible revenues and some things on the retirement side, and we used the $750,000 that I mentioned earlier. So, our fund balance at the beginning of the 12-13 year, that's as of June 30th, 2012, is $2.6 million. So, that doesn't give us a lot of money. It's about 1.9% of our budget. It doesn't give us a lot of money to subsidize our budget going forward. So, we need to keep that in mind as we work through, so, work through the budget for 13-14. So, kind of in summary, we currently estimate that we're at risk of overspending our budget for 12-13. I'm confident that we'll get that under control, and we'll bring our budget in, but we're going to have to do some aggressive management for the next nine months. Although we forecast our 13-14 revenues will increase by 1.4 million, we're also forecasting that our expenses will increase by 4.5 million. So, that puts us in a situation where we've got to look at some expense cuts or look at lobby, you know, we've got to look at lobbying and legislative effort to convince our, the folks in Albany to give us more aid. And then, we need to look at reducing our dependence on fund balance because we don't have a significant fund balance to subsidize our operations. So, as we sit on October 1st, we've got another challenging budget year ahead of us. Are there any questions?
What have you heard or are you hearing about outlook for BOSI's?
I haven't heard... So, we need to keep that in mind as we work through, so, work through the budget for 13-14. So, kind of in summary, we currently estimate that we're at risk of overspending our budget for 12-13. I'm confident that we'll get that under control and we'll bring our budget in. But we're going to have to do some aggressive management for the next nine months. Although we forecast our 13-14 revenues will increase by 1.4 million, we're also forecasting that our expenses will increase by 4.5 million. So, that puts us in a situation where we've got to look at some expense cuts or look at lobbying, you know, we've got to look at lobbying and legislative effort to convince our, the folks in Albany to give us more aid. And then, we need to look at reducing our dependence on fund balance because we don't have a significant fund balance to subsidize our operations. So, as we sit on October 1st, we've got another challenging budget year ahead of us. Are there any questions?
What have you heard or are you hearing about outlook for BOSI's aid?
I haven't heard anything other than business as usual at this point. And, you know, are you referring to the possibility that they may change the rules? I haven't heard anything. I have gone to two events this year. As you know, we subscribe to Questar BOSI's, and we get financial aid information on that. And in that, the fall workshop, they made no mention of any changes in BOSI's aid. Sure. Any other questions? I'll keep you posted. Bob, did you have one? I'll keep you posted as the process develops.
We have no comments from the audience this evening. Before we take comments from the board, I would ask if everyone had a chance to review the committee assignments. Were there any questions or discussion? Can I entertain a motion to approve the 2012-2013 board committee assignment? Cat, second, Michael Marizio, all in favor? Board comments? Mr. Crabtree, do you have some?
Oh, yes. First of all, to piggyback on what the president said, I am the new chair for the Legislative Committee. And our first meeting is going to be October 16th at 6:00. And that's Mr. Michael over there, and George, and Mr. Carbone. And you will get a letter on that.
Oh, you'll send us an email?
Yep. You're going to get an email, but I just wanted you to, we're going to start with that time. If it doesn't work out, then we'll reschedule for whatever. Tonight, I will not be able to vote on personnel because my name is there for a mentor, and I feel I should not vote on that. I wanted you to know that-
What, is it A or B?
I believe it's A. But I want to tell a little bit real quickly about the mentor program. We have a new leader this year, House Two Principal. He told me I couldn't announce him, but I'm going to, Mr. DeHara. And there are 70 students from CNS that are in this program. And he has been recruiting and recruiting and recruiting. Tonight, the board will vote on retired teachers that are mentors. But what impresses me most, and the students are here for a pig, is your fellow teachers that are in your building. Many of your teachers have volunteered to work with that student that is struggling at your school. Could be a 10th grader, could be an 11th grader, could be a 12th grader. With all the regulations that these teachers have this year, this makes my heart special to the staff at CNS because I know you're being overworked. I know that. But to step forward and to see them during their lunch period today, to work with these students, it's amazing. And Joe, thank you for the beginning of your program, but also Melissa, to all your staff at your school. Which now leads me into something a little negative, and that's class size at the high school. And I could ask any of these students here, some of the number of students in your classes. I walked into a math class, a probability and statistics. I'm guessing it isn't elective. However, it is a very important class for many students going to college. The teacher was in the corner of the room because there were 30 students in that classroom. That should not be happening. And the one that really bothers me the most, because this board talked about this two years ago, Dr. Dice was not here, and that's the science class, especially chemistry. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, 29 kids in a chemistry class that is dealing with open flames and chemicals. Do we remember last year, another school district, and what happened? We do not want that to happen. So, I'm going to ask Dawn if she could come back to the board, meet with Melissa. Yes, there are classes of 15 up there. This shouldn't have happened either. There needs to be a look at the process that we use for scheduling these students. I do realize we, Donna Norton told us that double the number of kids that went to summer school, that does affect that scheduling. But we need to look at this. We need not, we looked at elementary, but we need to look at the high school. If you could do that and come back and maybe explain to the board some things about that, I would appreciate it. That chemistry really, really bothers me because I would not want an accident to happen. And I do know, I won't embarrass them, there's a board member here where an accident did happen in a chemistry class. My last thing, my last thing is, and I wish Kesa Farada-Breton was here. I know, Dawn, that it doesn't look good for the budget. But we're growing late, and we're growing late in this district for full-time kindergarten. This year, the West Hill Central School District and Marcella, I believe, have gone to full-time kindergarten. We've read in the paper that West Genesee is going to full-time kindergarten. We are one of few districts, less than five, that does not have full-time kindergarten. Our own president, Pat Carbone, mentioned a year and a half ago, people coming up to him, "When is North Syracuse going to full-time kindergarten?" So, I wish they hadn't left because what a great project for the LENS program, Dr. Dice, for some of them to look at. Is there a way that we financially can do this? Look at what the state's going to give us? Look at the room and space we have? Because these teachers and these students deserve better. And to go into a kindergarten classroom and see for two hours what they have to do, I could ask these students that are here, "What you did in kindergarten is a lot different than what these students are doing." It's not fair to the students, it's not fair to the teachers. We really need to start now, and we really need to look into this. And so, those are two of my concerns I wanted to bring up.
Else?
As you know, this past Friday, I had the opportunity to go to Cambridge, Massachusetts with John Carrillo to attend the Northeast Turn Conference. I'm working on getting you all copies of the documents that we received, but we were able to hear speakers from Providence, Rhode Island, Maine, Syracuse, the Cambridge area, on how they're dealing with cuts to their budget and the teacher evaluation system. So, some really good ideas came out of that, and I want to get you guys the documents so you can see what we were able to learn.
And thanks for going.
Oh, that's great.
Today, I had the opportunity to visit Cicero Elementary, and I just wanted to thank Mrs. Wheeler and her staff for a warm welcome and an amazing day. I got to read to two groups of students, two books by Julia Cook, Personal Space Camp and Don't Be Afraid to Drop. I also had the opportunity to sit in on a math lesson. That was just awesome. I was so impressed with the fact that our first graders were just rocking and rolling with their addition. It was so much fun. And I also got to go on a lion hunt in PE class. So, visiting schools is the best part of my day. And what was so funny is that all of the kids remembered the lion hunt. Because when I went to visit, like, the fourth grade class and the first graders, and I started talking about the lion hunt, they were like, "Oh, we just remem-" That was so much fun! So, it definitely was an amazing experience. And to see Mr. Stimson and Mr. Bigford go through all of the theatrics was just even a lot more fun for me. So, to Cicero, thank you for a warm welcome. Visiting schools is the best part of my day and most definitely the best part of my job. So, I know I'll be out and about visiting other schools, and I look forward to just bringing that good news back to our board meetings. Thank you.
Routine action item, there's only one this evening. Any questions or comments? Recommended action is to approve item A as submitted. Motion? Michael Marizio first, Sandy second, all in favor? Adoption of the budget calendar? Were there any questions on that at all? And we're going to be doing, getting the budget information on our computer online rather than the big books, correct?
Yes, I think that's-
Unless someone would want the big book. If someone wants the big book, they can have it, right?
Right.
Comment to Connie that I would appreciate is when we get down to crunch time, to have hard copies so that you can share with the screen. Those of us who aren't as adept or, Dr. Dice is a two screener, it's nice to, for older eyes, particular, it's nice to have that hard copy.
Well, if you want a hard copy, make sure you let Connie know so that she can make sure that you have them, if that's what you want.
And what we can do is at least have one book that has everything so in case, you know, we can immediately get you that stuff.
Other questions? Recommendation is to adopt the 2013-2014 budget calendar. Motion? George, second. Michael Dinoffrio, all in favor? That's unanimous. If the roof comes off-
Feels like the roof is rising.
Now I know what, there was an accident in the chemistry class.
Acceptance of the report of the independent auditor. As a member of the audit, Jerry, would you come up as a member of the audit committee? Members are myself, Mr. Crabtree, and John Dubio, CPA and resident-
Accountant and resident.
Right, and resident accountant. We met last week prior to the board meeting to discuss the preliminaries. And Mr. Mickelson has, for the three or four years now that we've had the audit committee in place, I think it's been three or four years, has taken us through the process, and they do a tremendous job for us. And he's here to report to the board as a whole. So, with that, Jerry?
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, just to affirm that the financial position of the primary operating funds of the district have been sustained in a very difficult environment, economic environment, to sustain your educational mission and support services to the extent that you have and have all the successes that have been accomplished. First, I'd like to affirm that the $2,646,000 of unassigned fund balance that Dawn talked about is the true number in our reports. And so, I thought I would just add that comment here, just to give credibility to his starting point for a very difficult task as we move forward, as you move forward to the 13-14 budget development process and monitoring your operations for 12-13. I must say that I, over the years of our experience with you as a district, the financial planning that has taken place is a credit to the district to pretty much accurately project your fund balance very early in the year, the impact of the revenues and expenses as your workforce has come into place with your student population here. And to have first-quarter reports, I think that's probably one of the earliest prognostises that you've been officially been delivered. So, that's a credit to Dawn and his team. Our primary responsibility is to conduct a financial statement audit. In our executive summary, we've summarized our deliverables as well as in our letter to you in your governance capacity. First of all, I'd like to indicate that we have an unqualified opinion that your financial statements present fairly, your assets, liabilities, and net assets, revenues and expenses, and changes in net assets. And then, on the fund basis, financials, which are integral part of the very comprehensive financial reports that you've received electronically, and hard copies are available should you want those. As part of the audit process, we are responsible for looking at the primary operating policies and procedures. So, your cash receipts, revenue recognition cycle, your purchase expense, cash disbursement cycle, payroll administration, which together fringe benefits is nearly 70% of your budget. And the utilization of your software systems accumulate tremendous volume of transactions throughout the year. So, from that perspective, we have issued a report on internal control and compliance with laws, regulations, and we're pleased to report that we have no material instances of noncompliance on entity-wide basis and no material instances of lapses in internal control. And again, internal control are really the checks and balances in place in any transaction that occurs. Essentially, internal control is that no one person in the district can execute a transaction in its entirety by themselves, that it would have to have well over two or more individuals involved in the transaction. And normally, there's perhaps around four or five transaction checks or more before a transaction is completed. So, what we do is we, as we discussed with the audit committee, is we select representative transactions and flow them through the system for those underlying attributes. And again, we have no comments of concern to report in a letter of comments to you regarding those operating systems. And our testing of a very significant number of transactions in different ways, you know, we have really no constructive comments in our letter of comments, other than the due diligence comment regarding utilization of your reserve accounts. Your reserve accounts in the voter-approved budget are approximately 1.8 million. They have not had to be invaded in the last three years, so they're there as somewhat of a cushion for specific issues such as tax surcharge or unemployment that beyond the budget, what's provided for in the budget. And from that perspective, it's also too important to talk about another significant aspect about our audit. About $9.2 million was expended under the various federal award programs, the Educational Jobs Fund replaced the stimulus funds from the last two years, your Title I and Special Education clusters, USDA programs. And we've required to test a certain amount of compliance with the program requirements. And we're pleased to, again, report in a separate correspondence letter, an opinion to you that we've, there are no material instances of noncompliance with the program requirements from those that were tested. And there's no issues of lapse of administrative controls over those programs. So, again, we have no comments to report regarding the administration of the federal award programs, again, which amounts to more than $9.2 million. In our communication letter to you, we talk about accounting policies. Last year, we talked about, there was a change in GASB 54, which was really semantic about definition of fund balances in your voter-approved budget accounting. And so, this year, there are no changes in accounting policy, so the financial information is presented in a consistent fashion, as you compare in our executive summary and other attributes to the report, prior year information. There's sound basis for the supplementary information and disclosures in the form of footnotes in the financial statements and the underlying data within the financials. Sound estimates for, regarding estimates, there's sound basis for those estimates. There are no significant audit adjustments required in the audit process that were detected by the multitude of types of analytics that we do in the conduct of our audit. And no issues of concern really to report to you. We had very good, two planning meetings with the audit committee. One at the front end of the audit to review our audit plan and gain input for that. And then, the second meeting to review the draft financials and entertain a number of questions in that process. So, I'd like to commend the administrative team and following, and the board and your leadership in setting the tone for instilling a positive tone that the compliance with policies and procedures within the district needs to be effective, it needs to be documented, it needs to be timely, and in compliance with your various laws, regulations, and budgetary constraints. I'd open it up to any questions anybody might have. Not like the first one, you remember? Thank you.
Thank you. Is to approve the resolution that the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education approves the 2011-2012 audit. Cat, second, Michael Dinoffrio, all in favor? Request to revise textbook list. Question, or is there any comments or concerns with that? Action is approve the above additions to the 2012, 2013 textbook list. Second, Pat, all in favor? Need an executive session before we take up Personnel Items A and B? We're going to take them separately. The recommendation for Item A is to approve A as submitted. Do I have a motion? Sandy, Second, George, all in favor? That's, what are there, six, seven of us here? That's six. And Bob has to re...
I'm staying accused himself.
Support Staff B, before we take that up, I would just like to acknowledge a retirement. B's Kelsey, a teacher's aide at CNS High School, retires with 30 years of service to the district. We congratulate her and wish her well in her retirement. Recommended action for Item B is to acknowledge Item B. If I have a... Sandy, Second, Marizio, all in favor? That's unanimous also. Like to make a motion that we move to executive session for the purpose of receiving an updated relative to negotiations with two district bargaining units, and to review the employment record of three individuals with action to follow on one employment matter. Do I have a second? Mike DiNofrio, all in favor? That's unanimous. We're adjourned, and come on up, kid. We'll sign your forms for...